Session of the zoning board to order. There's a lot going on tonight, so I'm gonna try and stay as organized as possible here. So tonight, we have Member Shaw Tilton, Member Rick Ressman, Vice Chair Peter Coffin, Chair Megan Kelly, our Land Use Administrator Robin, and Member Kyle Beish. We are going to just quickly start with, we had one person reach out about being an alternate for the zoning board, Charles Hart, who has been on zoning before. So unless anyone has any objections, we're going to sign off. Do you want me to take a vote?
Yeah, I'll move that we appoint Chuck Carter as alternate to the ZBA.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Wonderful. Alright, so let me just put that back here. Perfect. Because we had elections in March, we need to reelect our officers for the board. So at this moment, I will accept any nominations.
I'll nominate Megan Kelly as chair. You need a second?
Thank you.
I will accept the nomination unless anyone has any objections.
Okay, take a vote.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I will nominate Peter Coffin as vice chair. Did you second?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Alright, we get to keep our seats. At this mo— at this point, I will take a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved? As written?
As written.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Alright. Perfect. Alright. So before we get to our first application tonight, the board does need to enter a brief non-public session to review advice from legal counsel.
Okay, I'll move that the board enters a non-public session to discuss advice of town council under the rules of RSA 91, A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, sub-paragraph L as in Lima, for consideration of advice by legal counsel. Ready for the roll call?
Second, can I get a second by Shaw? Alright, would you have to do a roll call vote for this? So, Mr. Tilton?
Yes.
Mr. Ressman?
Yes.
Mr. Coffin?
Yes.
I am also a yes, and Mr. Beish?
Yes.
Alright, we are going—
easiest way to go down to the kitchen.
Yeah, we're gonna go down to the kitchen downstairs. So we're gonna enter a non-public session at 7:04.
Oh, it's— Advice of counsel on, I think that because the advice is given confidentially, that's why we're going non-public, is so that we just say it's advice of counsel.
Yes, we reached out to legal counsel for advice. It is a confidential correspondence that came back, so we will go downstairs for a brief moment. There will be no votes taken at this time. It is just to review information, and then we will be back. And then, twenty, anything on this still? I don't know if there's down, any help? Alright, so a motion was made by Mr. Coffin to return to public session and seconded by Mr. Beish. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Tilton?
Yes.
Mr. Ressman? Mr. Coffin, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that means at this time, we will have our first applicant come forward, which is RJNH Construction, to present their application. And when you're using the microphones, if you could just click the button when you talk, and actually, this end is the speaker, or is the mic itself? Thank you. And if you could introduce yourselves for the minutes.
Sure, would you like me to just go into my presentation? How would you like to do it?
Sure, yeah, if you introduce yourself, and then, yeah, you can present the application.
My name is Barry Guyer, I'm with Joneson Beach Engineers here for the applicant. With me tonight is Mr. Kevin Landry, he's with the applicant. The project we have tonight is map 40, lots 15, 16, and 18. They're part of the old Magasin Farm property with frontage on Route 125 to the east side of the blinking light. The property's 42.18 acres in the C2 district. We're here tonight seeking a variance to Article 109, Section 109.6 of the zoning ordinance to allow multifamily residential in the C2 district. Residential is currently prohibited in the C2 district. This variance is to allow multifamily residential use in this zone. We do realize that we will need a variance for the density as, well, we discussed, or as the board discussed at the last meeting we were here. Unfortunately, we were unable to make the deadline, so we will have to come back. The existing property has significant frontage on Route 125 on the east side of the blinking yellow light. The land extends east to the wetland associated with the Little River. It has significant topographical drop from the area along the frontage on 125 to the back or the east side of the property. It also has a large wetland complex along the eastern and southern boundaries. And it is surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial uses. We have the Carriertown Plaza across the street, as well as Store Mart. There are houses north on 125, as well as a lot of residential on Little River Road. The intent is to construct a mixed-use development consisting of retail commercial sites along the frontage of Route 125, and multifamily residential behind the retail. The multifamily will be 25, well, our proposal currently is for 25 duplexes or 50 units. And if you'd like, we could go through the criteria. Again, the variance is to Article 109, Section 109.6, to allow multifamily residential construction in the C2 district. Number one of the criteria is that the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the property to include the commercial development along Route 125 and the multifamily residential in the back of the lot. This matches the current surrounding development with the combination of commercial and residential throughout the area. Proposed residential would not create a greater safety issue than if the property were only commercial, and for these two reasons, we believe granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. In addition, the courts have deemed that the uses must unduly and in a marketed degree conflict with zoning. This request does not, as this area is a mixture of commercial and residential, and therefore is not contrary to the public interest. Item or criteria number two is that if the variance were granted, the ordinance would be observed because the property along 125 will be utilized as commercial, thereby observing the spirit of the ordinance. It's the applicant's opinion that multifamily residential acts as a buffer transition between the lower-density residential, which is more to the east along Little River, as we discussed previously, and the commercial uses, and therefore meets the spirit of the ordinance. Surrounding properties are a mix of residential and commercial, which is what is being proposed. Therefore, the spirit of the ordinance is being observed. Conversely, it's apparent that there is no justification to strictly apply a residential construction prohibit— prohibition to this unique property because the application is unnecessary to accomplish a legitimate public purpose, and there is no gain or minimal gain to the public. But the harm to the property owner is great because without the variance, it will not be able to realize the full value and full use of the lot. Criteria number three is that there is substantial justice in granting the variance because granting the variance will allow the applicant to fully develop the parcel that would otherwise be undeveloped as the commercial development is insufficient to derive this development alone. There is no gain to the general public from leaving the portion of this project undeveloped. We have all heard about the housing crisis in the state, and have probably all seen the need for additional workers in state. Granting the variance would allow some of this needed housing in a location that is ideal for increased density due to the proximity to 125, Carriertown Crossing area, downtown Kingston. And denying the variance will provide no gain to the public, but will provide a loss to the owner by denying the ability to fully realize development of the rear of the property. Therefore, substantial justice is done by granting the variance. Number four is that the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the property is currently allowed to be developed with the higher-impact commercial sites throughout the parcel. Allowing the lower-impact residential behind the proposed commercial will not adversely impact the surrounding property values. To support this position, we have provided a letter from Yanko Appraisal Services, who state that their opinion is that the proposed project will not adversely impact the property values. And number five is that the literal enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because, A, owing to a special condition of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. One is that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the proposed because the intent of the ordinance is to promote commercial development along 125, which our plan does include. The subject property extends east of 125 with a significant drop in to poverty to the east. This property is unique due to the combination of having residential on two sides of a commercially zoned parcel, being located at an ideal location for commercial along Route 125, the unique shape of the lot extending east as it does from 125, and the topographical and wetland issues to the east. All of these items contribute to the special condition that distinguishes property from other properties. Therefore, granting the variance would allow the applicant to meet the general purpose of the ordinance while allowing residential development behind the commercial. And two is that the proposed use isn't a reasonable, is a reasonable one because the existing property has frontage along Route 25, but also extends east of the frontage where the commercial development is limited due to the visibility and topographical constraints. The combination of these constraints, along with those items mentioned previously, create a hardship specific to this property, and there is no practical reason to restrict the use of this area to commercial when it really isn't viable for commercial uses. Conversely, there is no practical reason to not allow the residential use in the area when it's a practice use and is located all around, residential is located all around the subject property. So, in closing, I'd just like to say that if the board grants the use variance, we will need to return to obtain the desired density. In addition, we are in receipt of the RPC Rockingham Planning Commission's comments. And as I said before, the need for more housing and varying housing styles in New Hampshire has been in the news a lot. I think we've all seen it. It's being discussed and conquered daily. We believe this project is a step towards meeting the demand in a logical and thoughtful manner, and this is just the first step in the approval process. We've already discussed that we'll need to come back for the density, and we will also need approval at the planning board and have several state permits that will be required. So with that, taking any questions the board has?
Have you looked at the density issue? I know that that would be a separate hearing, but, I mean, the question then is gonna be whether the ZBA is gonna have to get the hydrogeologic study done and all the other things that are required because of the aqua-protection zone.
Sure, I'm sure, I think that's a requirement by the planning board as well.
It is in our regulations, and depends on the flow rate.
Right. We haven't completed a, the hydrogeological study at this point. We did look at the density. We don't think we have an issue with the density. Of course, we have to come back and talk to the board. We did reduce the density, but it's very similar to, or we based upon the density of multifamily and the the density of multifamily, and the only multifamily in town is the C-one district, which the vast majority of the C-one district is also an aquifer district, so, um, that's what we based it on.
When you were putting the proposal together, um, you go over that you felt that this was the best use of the property. What else did you consider instead of if it was to be full commercial? Uh, did you make any other considerations before coming to, uh, mixed use?
Well, personally, I've been involved in this pro- property for about eight years now. Um, when it first came on the market and was sold and was looked at as a, a, a complete commercial project, that obviously didn't fly because the only, and this applicant wasn't part of that in any way, shape, or form. But when we looked at that, the, the issue was that the, to make it work, you had to have a, basically a big box in the back grocery store, some very large retail component. Um, and they're, it's Kingston, and it just doesn't exist right now, the, the demand for that. So, um, this applicant, we looked at it, and this was what he was looking at because those other commercial ventures failed. I mean, there was a, a different project that was in front of the board just a year or two ago, um, which failed. Uh, so it's kind of, uh, you know, moved on from that because it, it just won't work.
Well, the Kingston crossings, the one, first one that you talked about, um, was, I think, going to be phased in, but started with a commercial, with a convenience store and then a bank and, which it, it, I noticed a lot of similarities between that first proposal. And that, that really didn't come to us. Um, it, I'm not sure why, but, uh, it received some support, um, and I think went to the state, and I'm sure what happened to that project, but, uh, it certainly was put forward as a viable project with just commercial, um, phased-in, uh, stores and banks and.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was the proposal. It didn't, it had nothing to do with the state, actually.
Oh, okay.
The, the access was approved by the state. It wasn't purchased by the applicant at that time, um, because they couldn't find a big box.
Oh, okay.
And that's what really drives this development.
I don't know if you're familiar with the topography of the land. I'm so sorry. If you're familiar with the topography of the land, but it dramatically drops off when you have one twenty-five, all along one twenty-five is nice and even. You have almost like a field and then a boundary of trees, and then it drops off dramatically. And in order to put in the commercial, you'd almost not even see the development from one twenty-five and between the landscaping, and I know that's not an issue for here, but dividing between the two, the commercial is almost going to be elevated or one twenty-five level, and the housing is going to be down almost in a hole. And when you look at commercial, there's no exposure. So if you tried to do multiple commercial, there's no act, no visual from one twenty-five. You're just not going to see it in the hole. And in order to bring up that amount of land, you're just talking tens of millions of dollars.
Yeah, we think this proposal, because we do have the pad sites out front, you know, um, you ha- where you expect the, the, um, commercial retail, it's going to exist there. And then behind that, where you're not going to see, you know, it makes sense to us to put in retail or, uh, residential.
Can you, you just speak to the, it was fifty units of housing before, and now it's down to twenty-five. What, what changed between the last meeting and this?
Um, we reevaluated, um, this applicant really likes duplexes. So we were looking at, uh, to get the higher density, we were looking at a combination of duplexes, uh, triplexes and maybe even fourplexes, and we think that the duplexes work a lot better in this area, too. So that's really what, and, and we reevaluated, um, based upon the commercial dense or the, um, multifamily density in the C-one. And so that kind of brought the, the density allowed down.
And is the housing for purchase or is it rental?
Purchase.
Yeah, they'll be, it'll be a condominium. Or each of the units will be a condominium.
Was there any consideration for any type of workforce housing?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Was there any consideration for any type of workforce housing or, um, lower-cost housing, which is also needed in this area?
Do you want to address that?
Still at initial stages. Okay, we're at a, a lot of financial early stages, however, these are going to be two- and three-bedroom, majority two-bedroom duplexes. Less three specifically because of the density, and that is ultimately the goal, is a cost-effective situation and not go and put in million-dollar, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. As far as continuously going forward, if tonight is the first stepping stone, then we will proceed forward with the planning board, a full proposal. We'll spend more money in the engineering, the traffic. We saw the, you know, the other towns' letter, you know, they've said, oh, great, you know, housing is a, an issue. Uh, we did a preliminary traffic study. We've already talked to DOT to make sure that we can get the access back, um, but we haven't spent any money there yet because it would just be thrown away if we get the variance. So we're looking at all the other options, trying to put together the best funnel direction.
Man, I think this brings, with the duplex, it, it brings a different type of, um, development to town that is needed. And it's not the single-family and, you know, very expensive homes. You know, it, I don't think, we're currently not evaluating for workforce housing as defined by the state, but I think you will have a lot of workforce, um, people purchasing these units.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, as we're looking at the plan, you know, the proposed site plan, and you're talking about it being set back and there's a drop-off, where would I be seeing the drop-off based on?
If you turn those ZBA to... That has the topography included, and you can see how the, there's the topo- the topographical lines are really stacked up right either on or behind the, the proposed commercial.
I do believe it's about an eighteen, as I've driven the property many times. My wife wanted to kill me when I brought her back there at one point. Uh, it's about an eighteen to twenty-foot drop.
Uh, does the board have any further questions at the moment or?
So what commercial aspects are in this proposal?
Well, the three pad sites, I mean, we're proposing, uh, a potential bank, a potential, we haven't, he hasn't sold, I mean, obviously, this is the first step. We have to figure out where we're going from here. But there will be the pad sites that are, you know, we're looking at potentially a, like a dollar store type of, um, user, a bank, and potentially, uh, a, uh, fast food or some other type of drive-through restaurant.
Yeah, and just one other commercial question. So I, I appreciate the drop-offs. I understand what you're saying there. So not every business needs storefront, um, you know, signage along one twenty-five. There are lots of businesses. We have different condos down south that, you know, don't use that. So I'm wondering about consideration for other businesses that don't require that type of.
We had a project in Wyndham, similar. We did two thousand to four thousand square foot units. After building the building, they sat vacant for two and a half years. Rented out one space, right? We have found that, uh, most offices have pretty much diminished since COVID. Medical parks now want to be inclusive all-in-one general area and have become very difficult to work with because they want to be boom, right at the heaviest intersection, at the heaviest point, right up front and center.
Well, I also think the, the, the property and the fact that it's set for so long without anything happening to it speaks for itself. I mean, because of the size of this property, you can't just build, you know, one commercial thing and, you know, that doesn't pay for the development that's required for this. Because we, um, have to put in the new access right onto one twenty-five and everything that that entails to actually drive the commercial, um, you have to have, you know, a, a, a size that would drive that ability to build this. And it hasn't happened for a reason. I mean, I've looked at it personally for several different, um, potential applicants, and it just hasn't because at all commercial, the back part just doesn't work.
There's the aquifer. There is the wetlands. There's.
Yeah, and, you know, people used to put offices in the back. Nobody builds offices anymore because, you know, a lot of people work at home or have different circumstances. So that was, that would be one that would, you know, potentially have gone in the back, and that just doesn't exist anymore, that need.
Just looking at the watershed, you start putting in a one or two acres worth of pavement, the amount of watershed that would go into the wetlands that abut this entire property, right? And we have no impact to wetlands. We have no wetland crossings. We stayed within those boundaries, so we're not having any exposure to any of the watershed or any of that runoff that would affect large commercial in that area. That creates a whole nother set of issues.
If the board wants to take a break from questions, I can open it up to public comment at the, at this time. Just because I don't know who's here, um, for this particular applicant, so trying to do this in a little bit of an orderly fashion. We'll start with anyone that is in favor of this project that would like to come up and speak. I'm going to use the microphone. If you could just move one of those microphones over. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Um, if you could come up and, uh, have a seat and introduce yourself, um, with your name and your address, uh, and then, um, if you are in favor of this project and why. Okay? Yep, come on up.
Hi, my name's Lorraine Masterly. I live fifteen North Road. This is the first I've heard of this proposal, but, um, I like that they were mindful in their proposal with what they'd like to do. I don't see, um, any issue. They talked about the water runoff. I think an aquifer, uh, zone is pretty much almost everywhere in Kingston, so I feel like we should just adopt the hydrogeological study company to our town and we'd probably save some money. I feel like, uh, having three adult children, two of which are still at home, we definitely need housing, and having it being discussed right now in Concord, um, where they essentially want to take away local control, um, by just hopefully blanket slate any commercial zone, let's put in some multifamily housing. I feel like these guys are, um, on track, and it's refreshing to hear that it's not another fifty-five and older, uh, development considering, uh, the younger crowd is definitely squeezed. I'm appreciative that you asked about the workforce housing. I thought that was a very good comment as well in terms of having a blend of all the housing, and I do think that's definitely something to consider as they go forward, that that, um, is definitely a need. So, um, I'm happy to, that we don't have vacant buildings, um, for over two and a half years, so I think they're, they're trying. As far as the retail, I'm not sure how much I'm jumping up and down about fast food in Kingston, but I do think change is coming to Kingston whether we like it or not, and this is an opportunity to help craft and mold what those things would be. So those would be things I would want to consider, but I'm in favor of what they would like to do to see some growth that Kingston needs and is coming anyway.
Perfect. Thank you for your, your thoughts on that. Yeah, it would still be public comment, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would still be, yep, absolutely.
Greens on, thank you. My name is Mark Kennedy, Land Use Administrator for the town of Brentwood. Uh, the Brentwood Planning Board has no comment at this time on this proposal. I'd hearken the letter from the RCP. There's just not enough information at this time to have comment. But I would give some recommendations to this zoning board of adjustment, and I would remind you that financial is not a burden. Just keep that in mind, and, uh, that's just about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the project? Okay. All right, anyone that is opposed to the project that would like to come up and, uh, and speak on that is welcome at this time.
Phil Coombs, Six Little River Road. Uh, I just had a question whether Kingston Police or Kingston Fire had been consulted on the potential impacts of adding a hundred and fifty people in this spot and what potential impacts that might have on services and additions to services.
They have not been consulted at this time. It is a recommendation that was made from the RPC and something that we will be discussing this evening, um, about possibly receiving before moving forward, so. Any other public comment, uh, in opposition to the application? Okay. Does the board have any further questions after hearing any of that or?
The letter from Divine.
Oh. Yes. Okay. We did, yes. Can I borrow that for a second?
Yeah.
I know it's here somewhere, but I've got a lot of paperwork going on. Um, we did receive public comment from, um, Attorney Divine Millamitt on this project in, um, on behalf of CW Station. Um, so I would just like to enter that into the record. Thank you.
Did you want to summarize it at all or?
Do you want to summarize it for me?
The, uh, it's basically rebuttal to the, uh, uh, criteria that Joneson Beach presented on the variance criteria. Uh, the variance will be contrary to the public interest. Uh, the property to be used for multifamily development is unequiv- will unequivocally, quote, alter the essential character of locality, which disqualifies it from eligibility for a variance. Um, and references the, uh, a photo they've provided that there's, uh, no multi-use, multifamily use in the area. It's not part of the character of this locality. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance will not be observed, they say, because, uh, New Hampshire law is long-held that considering the spirit, uh, the ordinance requires evaluating whether granting the variance will threaten public safety, health, or welfare of the general public, or whether the variance would deviate from the requirements of the ordinance unduly and in a marked degree. And says, we have a property in the corridor of the major thoroughfare of Kingston, Route one twenty-five. It's logically designated for commercial development rather than multifamily residential development. Uh, areas such as these are frequently designated commercial because of this type of, that type of use promotes the most, uh, responsible tax base for the town and creates predictable and practical traffic patterns. Um, multifamily development does the opposite. Sporadic, uh, traffic patterns, high volume. Talks about the tax revenue being lower for, um, multifamily use compared to commercial. Talks about the tax revenue being lower for multifamily use compared to commercial. And it says the application offers no evidence that the commercials, that the multifamily, they're putting multifamily residential development in these zones deviates from the objectives of the ordinance unduly and in a marked degree. And that the, let's see, still the applicant has not offered any evidence to show that the property can handle the extremely intense impact that multifamily use has on public welfare in terms of water supply and sanitary septic. And this is what we've talked about in terms of the hydrogeologic surveys and why there's a lower density requirement in the aqua protection zone. And then the no substantial justice in granting the variance. The law requires ZBA to evaluate in a way whether the harm to the applicant in denying the variance versus the benefit to the public in denying, benefit to the public in denying the variance. We offer the following table to assist in this evaluation. Say the harm to the applicant would be the inability to capitalize and profit on the market rate apartment trend. That it's endemic to the New Hampshire communities and benefits the public to prevent market rate apartments, which are leading cause of the current crisis in housing prices. Provide better tax revenue return from land and properties on commercial, that's what we talked about earlier. Reduce demand for expensive schools, public school services such as schools. Maintain police and emergency response, by the way. Maintain the commercial character of the town's primary thoroughfare corridor and prevent the highest and most impactful use of water and sanitation resources. He rebuts the family, the values of surrounding properties will be diminished. Rebutting the statement and the... There was professional opinion submitted by Yanko on that so that the board is free to form, use its own judgment and forming opinions, but does need to take on disputed professional recommendations into account. And that is the reason why they provide the information here. The ZBA needs to consider any evidence presented and to consider its own local knowledge. In the case at hand, the applicant presented no evidence. In this case, we do have a lot of... But rather has opined that multifamily use is lower impact than commercial use in a commercial zone. Multifamily residential use is the most impactful use of land to any community for all the reasons set forth in detail before. Commercial use in a designated commercial zone is by its nature the least impactful use, use desired by the residents of the town who enacted this ordinance. As for surrounding properties, CW Station has operated as a farm thereon, which is a bit to the east. For multiple generations, commercial use is compatible with agricultural use because agriculture is in fact commercial for all that subsistence farmers. Multifamily housing and apartment buildings are certainly not compatible with CW Station's property and would therefore diminish its value. In non-urban settings, multifamily use virtually always has a negative impact on the surrounding properties when those surrounding properties are not also multifamily uses. And finally, literal enforcement of the ordinance does not create any hardship on the applicant. It's no surprise the applicant stands to make more profit in developing the property with the use that is not allowed. This is not a legally cognizable hardship. There is a myriad of permitted uses for this property, none of which would reasonably be affected by the so-called topographical constraints alleged by the applicant. Further, the board would have to find that the topography of this land makes it such that multifamily is feasible but other permitted uses are not. That is simply not possible. The only hardship here is the applicant's inability to maximize profits at the expense of the residents of Kingston. That's the summation. The rest of the proposed findings and facts. Consider.
Yes. Okay. Does the applicant have anything further to state after hearing the public comment before we go into our deliberation?
Close public comment?
Yes, we will close public, thank you. Public comment at 7:50.
As far, I mean, the only thing we really heard was from the attorney for one of the butters, which we obviously disagree with many of the statements that were made in there. We do have responses from the appraiser who indicated that it would be a decrease in the surrounding home values. We also, I mean, I don't want to go bit by bit, but we disagree with the fact that the commercial would be less impactful on the surrounding areas because at the size that it would be required to make the project viable, as we discussed, would be very impactful in our opinion on the neighborhood. But did you have anything else to add, Kevin, or we could take questions from the board?
I'd like to just circle back questions to the board. I feel we, you know, we hit the points. You know, anybody that walks the land would understand the drop off. Anybody that's walked the land or knows the land, I mean, we are looking to put as much commercial upfront as feasible with the frontage. And then when you get into the challenges out back, like I said, the property's been there for a very long time. That speaks to a lot of it. And I think we're trying to best fit as much commercial as we can, as we need as much housing as we can, really in a great town.
And again, I think the hardship speaks for itself because this project hasn't been developed in the location that it is. There's a reason for that. And it's not just the topography, it's the topography, the location, the requirements of development and the wetlands that we've discussed previously. It's all those things together that form the hardship for why we're just asking for the ability to use portion of the property for multifamily. And as our, as we show, we're not looking to do large multifamily apartment buildings. It's more meet the nature of the neighborhood with, we think the duplex does that a lot better.
Thank you. I appreciate you going back to the hardship because I was going to ask you to kind of circle back and just go over what you do feel the hardship is because as stated before, financial reasons are not things that we can take into consideration for that.
Not alone. You can take financial hardship, but I think the mixture of all those items and, you know, we talked about how the requirement to develop this fully and which, not just fully, but nothing has happened on this project because it all has to be developed fully to max, not just to maximize profit, to actually make it profitable. And nobody in this business is in the business to do it, you know, out of the goodness of their heart. It's for profit and so that has to be taken into account as part of it. But the property itself is the hardship because of the topography, because of its location as far as right on 125 and the way it extends back further. If it was just the area that had, we have the three pad sites on, well, we would just do three pad sites. But because it extends, the 46 acres extends way off of 125, that adds to the hardship associated with the project.
And how does, to carry on in that vein though, one of the criteria is that it has to be unique to the property, but as it differentiates it from other properties in the area so that, you talk about the topography, but it seems to go up and down.
It's the combination of the size of the property. Like I said, if it was 10 acres on the frontage of 125, we wouldn't be here asking to do residential in the back of that. But because it's 46 acres, it has a large, you know, an area that is obviously conducive to the commercial retail development. And then it has this area that's just kind of left that no development is really good, commercial development is really going on. The property speaks for itself for sitting there that long to that. And as well as that topography and the wetlands in the back, all of that contribute to it, you know, the hardship of the property, which is unique because of all those items.
And there is. And you keep referring to 46 and on your plans, you've said 42 acres.
I'm sorry. I misspoke, 42 acres.
Okay. So, the other question I had is have you evaluated how much of that is upland billable? Because that's going to be playing into your density.
I don't have those numbers in front of me tonight, but we've looked at it as far as the density in the C1 district, which we spoke about earlier.
One thing I'd like to just add is with the property, if you are familiar with it, there is mixed use on both sides. We have residential on both sides and to the left of it, facing it from 125, there is mixed use where there are people living both across the street and to the left with small little businesses out. If you look at if for some reason some extra special commercial development came in, I think all those people would be in here complaining more. But ultimately, there is both residential on both sides, it's just a mixed use residential. Thank you.
All right. Does the board have any further questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation and for answering our questions. And at this time, the board is going to go into deliberations over the criteria and so there will be no more public comment at this time or?
Do we need to do anything with the RPC in terms of, do we need to enter the RPC or discuss that at all?
Does it have to be? Okay. Yes, we did receive recommendations from the Rockingham Planning Commission, the RPC. They evaluate projects like this on six different criteria, which are the relative size or number of dwelling units as compared with existing stock, proximity to the borders of a neighboring community, transportation networks, anticipated emissions such as light, noise, smoke, odors, or particles, proximity to aquifers or surface water, which transcend municipal boundaries, and shared facilities such as schools and solid waste disposal facilities, which is when we heard, we started this application last month, we determined that this had regional impact, which is why a representative from the Brentwood community is here from the planning.
I have people.
Okay, planning and zoning. And letters were also sent to East Kingston, I believe, because of the aquifer and Fremont because of the traffic. So, we are going to take their comments and recommendations into consideration during our deliberation. So, who would like to start and where?
I guess we should start with the worksheet and discuss granting the variance would or would not be contrary to the public interest and go from there.
And then base our discussion on that?
I would think so.
Well, it was brought up during public comment and it was also brought up in the letter from Rockingham Planning Commission about reaching out to the fire and police departments, which we have not done yet, to get their recommendation on how a build like this would affect our municipalities. I don't know how that fits into the criteria, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as a discussion first. Unfortunately, I didn't really think about it when we met last and we just got this letter only a couple of days ago, so we really didn't have time to reach out to them prior to this meeting.
Right. And I'm trying to think if this is something that would be relevant at this level. We have in the past on this actual property because of the, because of various other things, we did quite a bit of research. In general, the reason why it would be relevant as opposed to, for example, any other housing project that would be in a permissible zone is whether there's anything that would make this uniquely difficult for fire, police access or put undue load on them that a housing project in a residential area would. I think we have to limit ourselves just to how it applies to this project relative to the project in residential areas. I think we've discussed the school impacts before and in current, in the current climate of declining enrollments and sort of excess infrastructure. I don't think there's a negative impact on schools. So, fire and police is a legitimate area of concern. Typically, the...
I'm trying to find it in here. It was, it was one recommendation that they had for the zoning board, not, so they made a lot of recommendations that would be taken care of at the planning board level.
Right.
This was one that they felt that we should be considering.
Yes, under six, under shared facilities. And it's in the first paragraph.
It just says it's recommended that the board seek input from the Kingston Fire and Police Department to identify concerns with the use of mutual aid impacts.
So, I guess I do have a question just in terms of if it was commercial, I mean, I'm not sure what the difference is, but, you know, in terms of police and fire having, if there's 25 units, you know, that's people living there, that's a different use than a commercial zone that's not going to have people living there in that density. So, I don't know whether that, this is more of a question about whether that is something that's unique to this property independent of our commercial zone one down the road, which is where this is permissible. I hear Peter, you're sort of suggesting it's maybe not, it doesn't matter, but yeah.
Yeah. I do question whether there's anything unique.
About it?
The, would have an impact.
I mean, I don't know if this is...
There are impact fees that the planning board would be assessing for any residential project, so.
Well, would it be worth asking them what in comparison to any of the permitted uses for this property, how this would compare to?
Yeah, would be a legitimate question.
To those, I mean, I can't personally say for all of these how it would impact, but, you know, a continuing care retirement community is listed as a permitted use and that is a significant draw on our resources versus potentially a 50-unit build for residential. And they wouldn't even have to come before us to put that in.
Right.
So, I think it's probably worth having their opinion.
It strikes me that there would be an impact on fire and police only in that you get 150 people together. I mean, you get everything from, that you don't have in commercial. You have issues potentially with, you know, occasional domestic violence issues and other types of things that, you know, that you get more potential for, possibly fires. And I don't know what the safeguards would be in the commercial and whether they'd have to be sprinkled or not. So, I mean, I don't, the problem is what, to what degree would the impact be? But clearly, there's more impact than less. You can't say there's going to be less impact with these there. So, and I don't think you can say it's going to be neutral. I mean, it just, common sense would say there's got to be more impact than less. So it does have an impact on fire and police.
And if we're being consistent, we did on the last application, you know, request that information from police and fire.
With the information that we have, I don't know that I'm comfortable going through the criteria to vote on whether or not to allow this without taking some of the recommendations from Rockingham Planning and reaching out to fire and police.
And quite frankly, give us a little more time to analyze this, but yeah.
Yeah, can we just state for the record that we got that today?
The letter from RPC, yeah, we got it.
Yes, we got it today. So being able to review their recommendations and really take what they have given us in a four-page document into consideration has been a lot to absorb.
Yeah, it, I don't know the mechanics of this. If this was continued, whether a second variance request could be added to, maybe it would have to be separately noticed and all that type of stuff. Because a lot of these questions, they're tied in, a lot of the questions that are going to be needed to be answered about the density issues and the wetlands and setbacks and the carrying capacity, the land and all that kind of stuff on the residential use, which is as far as aquifer impact, it's much higher, which is why that exists. I don't know if that can be done now, it'd be one of those questions that we should be asking perhaps counsel or perhaps Glenn could help us with that. But whether you combine the two variances into one hearing.
I don't know if they'd allow that, like, we could probably.
I don't think so.
Hear it as a separate hearing that same night.
Same night, yeah.
If we could make a determination on this and then they could decide whether or not to move forward with the second variance application at that moment or withdraw it.
Yeah.
It would be up to them.
Because there might be a significant amount of research that would need to be done.
So.
For any density bonuses.
If we are considering continuing this to next month, what would we like for information to come back to us before then? We would like comments from police and fire. I believe a traffic study was mentioned that they had started. I can't really ask them now.
Oh, yeah, that's.
But we haven't presented that, if they've gotten a preliminary one done.
Yeah, I think it would be the difference between the traffic study that was done for this project as a commercial project versus a traffic study that would include the additional impact of sixty-two or fifty, whatever the, down to fifty units, dwelling units would have. And obviously, they're going to have to get a traffic study done for the state, the TIA done before the, before they can apply for the access.
Even the, the fire and police input, it would be helpful, but it's still, I suspect it'll be somewhat speculative because we don't have anything to measure it against. We don't have any multifamily that are a hundred and fifty people, let's say. Statistically, I suppose you could come up with some issue, some suggestions relative to fire potential and police intervention, that kind of stuff. And that's probably what they'd have to do because they don't have any hard data based on Kingston, at least, maybe there's someplace else that they could.
But I'd imagine they have access to that kind of information for similar towns.
Yeah, I mean, typically, the fire department will decide whether something needs to be sprinkled and, you know, distance from hydrants and all that kind of stuff. And so they'll just say, yeah, to comply with, you know, fire code, you know, whatever. And I don't know if you'd get that kind of, the kind of response back that we're looking for as far as the additional impact of multifamily housing units, complex.
I just would, sorry, I just, I wouldn't, so I appreciate the comments and also we should still, I mean, in my opinion, we should still ask for the information and.
That's right, we can't speculate on what they're going to respond.
Exactly, so we would need that.
It's been recommended that we do it, so.
Let's do that, then.
Yeah, so let's recommend it.
So the question, the thing that you were going with is in order to avoid piecemeal.
Right, so we're not coming back here month after month, like, is there anything else that's been recommended or that we feel is missing in order for us to be able to go through the criteria to make a determination? If they have had some semblance of a traffic study, even if it's preliminary, I'd love to see that. The RPC's recommendation was that the planning board deal with any hydrogeologic study that might be needed, because they are the ones that would then determine what the final density, and they would work that out back and forth.
Yeah, right now, we know what the density is for that zone. And it would allow three commercial buildings at two acres each and eleven dwelling units at three acres each. And that's the current, current thing, and if we don't, you know, in order to make this, I think economically viable for them, they're probably looking for more than eleven dwelling units, that would be, you know.
Which is why they're not coming back.
About sixty bucks, so, right, so. When you said that the planning board would make the final density determination, only if we don't grant the variance.
For the density.
Yeah, the density.
For increased density.
So I think that's, you know, unless you go with the current density for dwelling unit, we would determine what the density would be, so we would have to base that information on hard science.
Which would come with the other application, not necessarily this one.
Yes, yes.
So for this one, we don't need, we don't need to request that at this time.
No.
Is there any other information that we would like before reconvening next month?
I mean, not after reading through it like a couple of times, but it's not clear to me, I mean, the traffic assessment that was done was based on a higher density, but as well, I mean, again, it's a generic piece, but.
They went with a higher.
Right, so they.
Worst-case scenario.
Right, so I think we have that.
So you want to make a motion?
You need to.
For one thing, we need to determine whether this will take us beyond the forty-five days and we'd need to have the applicant agree to continue it so that, you know, the obvious, the thing is, we would have to deny based on insufficient evidence if we didn't get permission from the applicant for continuation, but before we vote on it, I think we should get that. So what you're asking is we're coming out of deliberations on the basis of insufficient information right now.
Yes.
And we're looking at getting continuation, so I would suggest that we have the applicant come back to the table since we're coming out of deliberations.
Okay.
And is that how you assess that? And then we can ask them about whether they would like to go with a continuation and what would be needed and all that, and have agree on dates and stuff like that.
Yes, okay, perfect.
So what information are we requesting from the applicant?
We, well, we're requesting information from the police and the fire departments on.
On the, any abnormal impact of the, just of the housing part, because that's the only thing we're dealing with here, is the housing section. Any, yeah.
So the RPC states it as to identify concerns with the use of mutual aid impacts in reference to.
Okay, so that's, they're coming from a regional impact, and so they're thinking Brentwood would be responding a bunch of times.
Right, but yeah, they want Kingston and police and fire's comments on that, but yes, but also for, for us.
Right.
How would it impact our municipality?
And then the applicant would obviously be able to provide their assessment of the impact of, you know, what they, their studies might show, so that they could come in with more information.
And this is something that they request from Kingston Fire?
No, we would, we would request that, but the applicant can also provide, knowing that that's some of the information that we feel we're looking at, they could provide, like a study showing what the police impact is for a fifty-unit housing, multifamily housing area, so.
All right, so at this time, the board's going to stop deliberating. We'd like to ask the applicant to come back to the table for a moment. Just asking if it's, impact, sorry, impact only. I had mentioned in comparison to.
Yeah, what could go there.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a twofold thing.
Oh, right, yeah, so for example. Difference, yeah, and you cited the age restriction, not age restriction.
The continued care.
Yeah, CCRC going in as being a permitted use and that being having significant fire department.
Right.
Impact.
Yeah, so kind of a twofold.
Yeah, that'd be something we'd want to, you'd want to address in your letter to
Yes, to.
Fire Department.
Fire.
And fire, please.
Fire and police, yes. So we heard of deliberations, we're clearly not at a point where we feel we have enough information to make a determination tonight. I do have, you did mention a traffic study before, you have some sort of preliminary one done?
A preliminary, we pulled the DOT traffic for one-twenty-five is a preliminary.
Okay.
So not an actual in-depth traffic study?
Well, we could also look at the potential traffic as proposed versus if it was all commercial with a big box, which would be necessary.
That would be a good comparison.
Yes, because if, you know, if that's what you're going with, that this is a better use for this property or a more appropriate use, I think we need that comparison to be able to.
So what we just look at, you know, because this is preliminary stages for us as a development group, just the traffic counts and what would be generated by those two different uses.
Yes, would be great. So currently, a determination's supposed to be made within, what, forty-five days? So continuing this is going to push us past that, so we want to make sure that you're amenable to that. Our next meeting would be on May eighth? May eighth?
May eighth, so I think any input would be due by the, what, do we say the Thursday prior, are we using ten days or are we using a week for this? Because I don't think we're talking about any revised plans or anything because we're not analyzing a plan set.
Is it ten days or a week?
On material?
Yeah.
Week.
How much time do you want?
Want to review the information, yeah.
We actually do ten days, but.
I think a week is sufficient, so that would be.
Anything more than two hours.
Anything more than two hours is better, yes.
Exactly, there is a compromise there. It wasn't you guys.
So, yeah, would that be by May, by May first? Would be a week?
Yes.
Is that, would you guys prefer ten days?
Yeah, one week is perfectly sufficient for the information we're seeking, I think.
It seems like it.
Yeah.
Okay, so May first. So we will reach out and get the thoughts on our, and from our police and fire departments, anything you guys wish to present on behalf of you for other information that you can pull together, for other studies that have been done on, on fire and police, you're welcome to submit as well. And then if you wouldn't mind giving us whatever you do already have for, for traffic study, I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
There, that kind of cover everything? So as far as our request for police and fire, it's going to be how it would impact them and then how it would impact in comparison to the permitted uses that are already allowed in that C-two zone.
And the one concern I have in that is that, is if we feel we're qualified to read a traffic study or have it explained sufficiently well, I know in the past when we, on this property, we had a traffic study because it's that intersection, obviously, and the redesign of it, it's going to be significant, but it mostly applies to the state, and they're going to need that. But is, whether we need to start an escrow account, where we have a company that can analyze a traffic report, I think that's going maybe overboard on this, because I think if we have a traffic report that shows us the differences between housing, the fifty-unit housing and a commercial use, I think that would be sufficient.
Is it some, is what they already have something that we should be forwarding to our, our police department for them to review? Would they be able to?
I'm not sure.
I think what we're going to, what we'll provide is basically right out of the Traffic Institute book that says, you know, these commercial uses provide or produce this much traffic at those times of day versus, you know, that'll be one number or set of numbers, and then the other set of numbers will just be, this is what the proposed commercial with the residential would produce. So they're easily to look up.
Similar to what RPC.
Okay, that would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, when we go to planning board and we have to do the whole, we'll have to do a whole traffic study that designs the intersection and that'll be that thick and we wouldn't be able to do that within the three weeks.
No, 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 and wait. Benefit analysis isn't really good on that.
Right.
Yeah, and stand by for, well, you know what's going on just to the north of you there, the amount of time the state's going to take is going to make us look like speed demons.
Okay, does that cover everything? Okay, so.
So the motion, we continue the hearing on this property to May eighth at seven PM at Town Hall, sorry, May eighth at Town Hall at seven PM, with any updated information due by Thursday at noon to the, to Robbins' office downstairs.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, what's that? Yeah, Rick's for a second.
In regards to the court's start dates, they already acknowledged, do we have to do a date or anything? Do we just say they agreed to continue?
Continue to the next meeting, yes.
Give a date that they're willing to vote to. That's what we had to just do for the, the other one, just did for.
So what are you suggesting, something beyond the eighth, you know, there's.
I don't know, they can, now they're ahead, but I think they'd have to actually.
Microphone, yeah. You're, sorry, say that again for the.
We acknowledge that we would agree to extend to the May eighth hearing date.
Yeah, so tolling the shot clock until the May eighth.
All right, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Right.
I, all opposed? All right. Oh.
Could you just forward the all the information and...
Oh, sorry, here, sorry, our representative from the, from Brentwood has just asked that we forward all the information to them that we receive from the applicant and from our town municipalities, and we will absolutely do that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I would ask if you have any input, if the, if you would like to ask your fire police if they have any input on...
For mutual aid?
I, I realize that that's advisory only, but...
No, I completely understand, but if...
Hold on, yeah, I got to come up and use the microphone.
Brock Kennedy, Land District Administrator for the town of Brentwood. So what I think, it's not going to really rise to the impact that, without a true traffic study, without a bunch of data, with all that data, it's hard for the planning board to come up with a comment letter. The same comments that Rockingham County Planning Commission had. That is all taken care of at the planning board phase. So what your phase is, is the five criteria, and I think it's best that you concentrate on those five criteria, answer the questions of the five criteria, and come up with a verdict to the five criteria. Because I see it all the time, zoning boards get lost in the weeds.
Yeah.
And I don't want you to get lost in the weeds. So all the stuff that you're, I mean, I would even go as far as to this applicant to say, work in concert with the planning board here, come up with mixed use, a mixed use ordinance, get it in front of the voters over here, get that passed and go forward with your project. That's the best way to go about it. We're in the midst of doing that in Brentwood, we're revamping a bunch of ordinances, and your question about workforce housing, you can work that right into the ordinance. Mixed use is a very important use, and it should be utilized, but it needs the proper care to craft that ordinance, to get it in front of the voters, and get it out to...
I hate to interrupt you, but...
Yeah, no.
Public comment.
No, you asked for comment, I gave it, I'm leaving it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want the, the information, I'll disseminate that to planning board members. If it's enough information, you will have a comment letter from us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we voted?
We voted?
Yep.
I'm just assuming if you guys have agreed or not.
Thank you. We did.
We did, we did.
We did, yes.
Unanimous.
We did, thank you, all right. So, for anyone that is, was here to listen to this particular application, there will be no more notifications for the butters. This is a notification that they will be continuing to the next meeting on May 8th at 7 o'clock here at the Town Hall. Okay. Anyone need a brief break, or are we ready to move into the next? Okay, keep going. All right, so our next application, I got discombobulated. There is, hold on, let me start by getting rid of everything for this application, please. Thanks. Okay. These are all for that. So, before we have the next applicant come up, it is another project that we need to determine regional impact on, in order to hear it.
And this is for Marshall Road project, and I am going to recuse myself on this one because I am on the planning board, and although I won't be hearing the last project we talked about, if it goes to the planning board, because I'm voting out of here, this one, I would recuse myself so that I can participate with the planning board on the, on the project.
Okay.
If it gets it.
Okay. You gave me... Okay, so, we did this last month, so we should be pretty familiar with the six different criteria and what they entail to determine regional impact. So, for Marshall, Marshall Road is a 55-plus community off of 107. So the first of the six with determining regional impact is the relative size or number of dwelling units as compared with existing stock. All right, so, the site plan, so as you see, the site plan that's been submitted to us is approved by the planning board. The only part of this that has lapsed for them is their use as a 55-plus community, because it is required that they have 20 acres to build on, and they have 17.93, I believe. And the variance was granted in 2017 and was not moved on. So does anyone have any comment on the relative size or number of dwelling units as compared with existing stock for this proposal?
So we'll get the plan, looks like there's 32 units.
Eight times, yes. 32 units would be eight quadruplexes. If it would help, I can read off some of what Rockingham Planning Commission has under this first criteria.
Sure.
So the proposed development may significantly affect the economic structure of neighboring communities by increasing the cost, doesn't seem to match up, increasing the cost of providing energy or other utility services to other towns, affecting the ability or need for workforce housing in the region or in adjacent towns, increasing the need for housing in an adjacent community or region, resulting in the construction of 50 or more residential units where any portion of the development is within 1,000 feet of a municipal boundary, resulting in the construction of a non-residential development that exceeds 50,000 square feet where the proposed development is within 2,500 feet of a municipal boundary, or any use or activity involved in transporting, storing, or producing hazardous materials. I don't think this is matching up with the 136 on here. Right, so...
Totally, yeah.
So, yes.
So, I mean, just to be clear, I mean, it's, I mean, I guess it's the eventual traffic light that'll be there, but, I mean, it's sort of Fremont, which is a couple miles down the road.
Mm-hmm.
It's, I mean, so it's more transportation, I would think, I don't know about the existing stock. Or, you know, I mean, again, it could be Brentwood, it's a mile down the road, they're turning on, I, it seems to be like transportation, and if we're just roughly running over these criteria, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and one of the only reasons, this determining DRI was not around, it was not something boards did in 2017.
Yeah.
Which is why we're having to do this now.
Yeah.
So are we currently of the opinion that number one is not of a concern for this particular project? Oh, thank you. It doesn't give any more definition. Thank you.
Do you have any...
Okay.
Well, we're comparing it to existing stock.
Right, so it's currently in the midst of basically, what, single-family homes and residential.
Right.
Single-family residential.
So, I mean, 32, it doesn't sound like a lot, but relative to the area that it's in.
But how would that impact another town, and why?
Well, I'm looking at the first criteria.
Yes, but it has to impact, like, this is a regional impact, so it's not how it impacts Kingston, it's how it impacts a town next to us. So the closest town to this would be Fremont, because it shares the same road.
Yeah. Actually, I think, before you hit Fremont, you hit Brentwood, I think.
Do you?
For a small section, and then it becomes Fremont, I think. But it's either end of the day or...
Sure, I mean, again, it's roughly two miles down the road, you know, so it's not immediately, it seems like it's...
This particular criteria doesn't seem to...
Yeah, I'm just like, thinking that this criteria is not, does not seem relevant, so I mean, or impactful, at this point.
Yeah, I think the closest neighboring community is too far away for consideration.
For the size of it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it rises to...
So we're saying, no on that one, I believe we took a vote last month for each one, so...
Sure, yeah.
So all in agreement that this, that number one would not constitute regional impact? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Proximity to the borders of a neighboring community, I unfortunately don't know how close the next community is. Like you said, it's got to be at least a mile down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the mileage, but it's a mile to two miles, it's not a killer.
To the next town?
Yeah.
Less than a mile.
Less than a mile, yeah.
Is it less than a mile?
Yeah, from...
Okay, so we can say...
It'd be less than a mile.
All right, so, with it being less than a mile down the road, how would this impact as a regional impact?
I don't think it is, I don't think it's...
Yes, that's one, yeah. Does anyone have any comments, which is why it would be an impact to them, being in that location?
Not really, no. No, I don't think it has any impact.
Okay. All in agreement, there's no regional impact for criteria two? Aye, all opposed? Transportation networks? 32 units going on to 107?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what that is, 64 cars, I don't know, but...
It's not a major intersection, it's not like coming out on 125, it's not going to require a light. So I would say no.
I mean, you know, it just slightly down is turning on to, you know, is it church, main, whatever the, what's the library?
Yeah, Church Street, Main Street.
Library.
Right.
And between Carriage Town and Partners Bank.
Yes.
Or between the...
And the library.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue.
All right, all in agreement that criteria number three does not fall under regional impact?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Dissipated emissions such as light, noise, smoke, orders of particles, I don't think this has any bearing.
Those older people can be rowdy.
You know that from experience, right?
Right, experience, that's right, that's it.
I mean, as a residential use, it's not...
Not, not for a regional impact, right, and that's going to be addressed by planning board, right, so this is regional impact.
Right, and it feels more commercial than residential. All right, so all in favor that number four does not have regional impact? Aye, all opposed? Proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries, this is, to the best I know, this is not on the aquifer protected zone, correct, Robin? We didn't receive anything.
Well, it is, it is no residential aquifer.
It is rural residential aquifer, thank you. So, the aquifer extends, it's the same aquifer that we were just discussing with the last application, so...
And you can start on the aquifer, just have mitigation of that.
Right, so...
Well, so, it is the same aquifer, it does impact the neighboring, it's the same, we're just saying Brentwood and all of the surroundings, so I'm not sure how we're...
Brentwood, East Kingston, and Fremont?
Yeah.
Or Brentwood, East Kingston were the aquifer concerns, Fremont was the traffic concern on the last application. So, pardon me, is going with, we determined it for the aquifer on the last application, and how we can't not at least get their public comment on this application as well?
To be consistent, yes.
Yes.
So, I would say yes.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yes.
Okay, so, all in favor of saying that item number five does constitute regional impact?
Aye.
All opposed? And then shared facilities such as schools and solid waste disposal facilities, I think very similarly to the last application, I mean, it's going to impact the schools, but we have our enrollments down for our school system, so if anything, it's a positive impact.
So not too many kids in a 55-plus community, so just...
Oh, that's true. Thank you for reminding me about that.
Well, I mean, youthful, maybe, but, yeah.
It's not unheard of.
A lot of ambulance calls, but...
So, are we comfortable saying no to item six?
Yes.
All in favor?
On the regional...
On the, of the, on regional impact. All right, so, based on the six criteria, we do determine regional impact for item five, proximity to aquifers or surface waters. So we will need to notify Brentwood and East Kingston, as they are shared on our aquifer, to get their public comment, and the Rockingham Planning Commission.
We didn't receive any comment from Brentwood or East Kingston on the aquifer for that project.
Sure.
Did RPC comment on it?
On, for the...
Yes.
For the previous one?
Yeah, they did, they did comment and mention...
RPC did.
Yes, RPC did.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have the towns, but...
Right, right.
Yeah, Brentwood was more concerned about the traffic impact, correct?
I think for consistency and due diligence, we should do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
We could, yeah, I mean, if we need to spell it out, we can take what we did on the last one, put it in there a little bit.
We have this...
Right, yeah, so, otherwise...
Okay. Yeah, do we make a motion? All right, so I'll make a motion to, yeah, thank you. Motion that the project has regional impact primarily because of the underlying aspect for number five, proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries across town lines of East Kingston and Brentwood.
Second, sorry, lots of seconds.
Everyone jumps on that. Everyone. Pick one, pick one.
Kyle, Kyle, Kyle.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, so, in essence, that means that this applicant is continued to the May eighth.
Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't have to make a motion for that, no. This application has been continued to the May eighth meeting. If you're here for hearing this application to get public comment or otherwise, this is your notification tonight, that there will be no new butter notices going out, and you can come back May eighth at seven o'clock.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you. You want that? As I filled it out? Okay, everything I don't want?
Can we just dump this all on your desk?
Alright, we're going to take five minutes to use the restroom, just stand up for a moment before we get going with the last application.
...
Put the peanut butter out of my mouth, okay. Hey, guys, boy, you're really emptied out in here. So, we'd like to, our next application is applicant Brendan Lee, Brandon Lee, from eleven Circuit Drive. The application is for the purpose of, to request four variances, adding a second story to the existing single-family home. Proposal does not expand the existing footprint. Variants being requested are two articles one oh four point five E, the rural residential district side setback which requires twenty feet, two oh one point seven, the aquifer protection ordinance for non-conforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses, two oh five four C, shore land protection ordinance requiring a hundred and fifty foot setback from the shoreline, and two oh five nine A, shore land protection ordinance, non-conforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses. So we'll have you guys come up, we're going to try and do this orderly, one variance at a time. I will start this by saying, the current board rule is no new business after ten o'clock, all business done by ten thirty, so we're going to try and get through this in timely fashion for you. If that sounds good. Because each, I would say each variance would be new, we wouldn't discuss a new variance after ten o'clock.
Oh.
If we didn't get through all four.
I see.
Is where my mind is at, but you can correct me if that is not where.
Let's see how it...
So let's see how it goes. So, we will start with... It's the worksheet, we have four worksheets. Which one did you start with? The one oh four five E, the side setback which requires twenty feet. So you're welcome to go through your criteria, explain the product a little bit, what you're trying to accomplish. And make sure, yes, please introduce yourself, turn your microphone on with that button.
I'm Rob Gingras, I'm the general contractor, and what we're trying to do is...
Oh, sorry, what was your name?
Rob Gingras.
Rob Gingras, thank you.
G-I-N-G-R-A-S. And we are trying to do a second floor addition for a master bedroom, master bathroom, and, and a little sitting room. A little sitting room.
Right, so my closest point between my, me and my neighbors on each side is ten feet, that is the footprint. And yes, I do know that is non-conforming, but we do not wish to expand upon that footprint, we, because as we want to build up. And in my corner here are my neighbors, my abutters, here to support the project, too. And the neighbor on my other side who did get that abutter notification is deceased. I'm doing what I'm told.
Especially the one...
Yes.
Okay, well, we can walk, you want to walk through each of the criteria for us, and, so like, why? Do you have your app?
Oh, okay.
Application?
Alright, so you want me to go through the points?
Yeah.
Okay, so, proposed variance will not be contrary to public interest because plans do not negatively affect neighboring properties with light air circulation or property values or privacy, no impact on infrastructure, no plans to make the structural footprint wider. Do you want me to go, keep on going? Okay. If the variance were granted in the spirit of ordinance would be observed because no change on water quality, no change in area footprint, no compromise, and no compromising of the environment. Three, the, there's substantial justice in granting the variance because, no, it's blah blah, because the current side setbacks would not change on the structure, the shape of the lot would not allow for it to be any other way. Meaning I can't go forward, I can't go back, can't go back out because I'll be getting closer to the water, I can't go forward because that would, because that's where my well is, can't go to the sides because there's no room. So, alright, so the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because no change in quality of life would be infringed, the environment would not be impacted, no infrastructure would be burdened. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance resulted unnecessary hardship because, lots of words, while the ordinance is fair, the structure will not move out closer to another as the plan is to move up, not out. And, more, lots of words, a variant is needed to use the property to fair and unimposing use. It is not my plan or intention or desire to obstruct any aspect of my community. I request variance for reasonable use of my property. Signed me, dated... Twenty-fifth of last month.
Does the board have any questions for this applicant on this variance request?
Only when you said no lighter heat. How close are the houses on either side of you?
On the side setbacks?
No, so I said not the side setbacks, but the other, my question is, because you're going up one floor?
Yes.
One of the requirements, and I think you're going to stay under thirty-five feet, right? Thirty feet, yeah. The total, what's the total height of the building?
It's about thirty feet at the most. On the main, on the front elevation, right now, he's at eight feet from the, from the ground to the edge of the roof. So it is a small unit, as it is. So we're not going, we will not be going over the thirty-five feet, with the wall under that.
Actually, I'm sorry, we recently just had an amendment passed at the last voting that it's now forty feet.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, that's right. But the reason I'm asking this is because the impact on the neighbors is if you, even if you go up and you're still, you know, below the maximum height requirement, if you're blocking their solar, you know, solar panels or their view, it's still an impact because that would be an effect of going up is to, if it was blocking stuff. I'm looking at this drawing and it looks like, if that helps, yeah. It looks like your property actually goes across Circuit Drive?
I'm sorry?
Your property actually goes across Circuit Drive, is that correct?
So, yes, eleven Circuit Drive, and again, my two direct abutters, closest to the water, one's deceased, the other two are right here, and then the person that's abutting the closest on Circuit Drive but not waterfront, they don't even have windows on their side, they're up much higher than me, because I look downward.
Okay, so it doesn't look like you're going to be blocking anybody's view of the pond?
No.
And because, I'm looking at this, the north step here shows that the pound is to your south, that it's not going to block sunlight coming into them, so, those are my concerns, it says that, is you're not blocking views and sunlight to close neighbors, because I know that neighborhood is pretty close together.
Look at me, I'm not trying to get anybody's sunlight.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'm just looking at the fifth criteria. What do you think would be a special condition of the property? You really need, you should elaborate on this.
Okay, which, which one? Are you talking about the A or B?
A.
Okay. So how far relationship exists between the...
So the first part of that says owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. So what is, what is different about your particular property?
Well, for me, it's the, on Circuit Drive, it is the smallest property and the furthest from the water as, as is, as compared to the rest of the structures. I'm not saying I have a conforming property by any means, but it is less unconforming than the other properties.
What I was looking for in here, just to let you know, is a pre-existing, it says there it goes, "Nonconforming use is legally in existence, so forth, may be maintained, repaired, and improved unless and until such use becomes imminent hazard." Nonconformity may not be expanded or changed. Okay, that's the word, that's why you're here, I guess, is because Pedro probably told you that it's, the use isn't changing, but it's... the use isn't changing, but it's being expanded. So...
Well, currently, this variance is for being too close to the setback.
Right, and that's, 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 that's our rural residential district, so, um... But that's, basically, the question I had was whether, uh, it was grandfathered because he's not expanding his footprint, but in, in here, because he's going more than 50% and, um, you know, the thing, the things that Pedro said before about, uh, what constitutes an expansion, um, that requires, uh, compliance with the code. If you, if you change more than 50% of the house or something, it, then you have to follow, you, you're subject to the new, to the code, even though you were grandfathered. Um, so, uh, so we do have to find that the variance meets these criteria, and I'm trying to thi-think if there's any way of, of incorporating that, um, pre-existing footprint in there, cause we used, we used to say that as long as you didn't change the footprint, um, you could, you, you were good to go. Um, and that has changed slightly, so I was, I was looking at...
Do you know what the square footage is that you're adding on? Yeah, so what's existing and what's going, what are you adding?
Yeah, the square footage is actually...
You gotta turn on your...
Yeah, the square footage is less than the original, um, the original dwelling, which is, I didn't have that note.
Uh, so you're eliminating the deck?
What are the...
Yeah, I saw that in there, that's, uh, what is a BMU, by the way? That's, that's, uh, on the tax card, uh, it refers to BMU, um, FFF BMU, oh, wait a second, basement.
Unfinished.
Oh, finished basement?
Unfinished, unfinished basement.
Oh, B-BMU is basement unfinished, okay. FFF is first floor finished. Okay, so that's...
So it's currently 636 square feet?
Correct.
Yep.
We're duplicating exactly the square footage on the first floor to the second floor.
Just so I can rock my brain around this a little better, it's a one-bedroom house right now. You, in your plans, you talk about a bonus room. Hmm, isn't that really a second bedroom?
I'm sorry?
You, you talk about a bonus room in, in your plans, but it strikes me that it, it really is a bedroom, isn't it?
No, it's a sitting, it's a sitting room, and I want some nice windows that overlook the water, and I'm gonna wanna have some, uh, plants, and I also love to, uh, have, uh, animals too, so it'd be, uh, nice to have, um, a bonus room to, uh, make room for my personal hobbies and my, uh, personal relationships, but no, it's not gonna be a bedroom.
And it doesn't have a closet?
And no closet.
Yeah, but, yeah, I was gonna say, closets usually the defining, for real estate agents is the defining term. And, and I, quite frankly, that's something that, that, um, you're gonna have to convince the building inspector, cause when it comes around to whether it requires a septic review and an expanded septic system or plans...
Correct.
Uh, he's gonna base it on the, the, uh, his criteria of bedroom, so, um, we're not gonna, you know, we need to deal with setback and, and the bedroom issue is something that, that Pedro will make a decision on...
Yeah.
As, as he would with any...
Yeah, we spoke, I spoke with Pedro regarding that, yeah.
Yeah.
And let him know, because we are deleting the first floor bedroom as well, so there's only still gonna maintain one bedroom on the, on the tax file.
Okay.
Um, just a little unclear, what are we debating, or, I mean, in terms of, on this particular variance?
Oh, well, but we got off on, on, with, with the question of, of how many bedrooms this is, cause if you expand from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom, you, your septic system has to be able to take care of that, and that's, septic systems in this particular part of town, right next to the water and on small, you know, lots and stuff like that, is, is a, is a big issue, and, uh, we've had people come in that needed to expand, but they've gone to, um, aerobic bacteria, uh, septic systems to expand their capacity within the footprint of something that would not be able to normally carry the two bedrooms, so, uh, I think he may require they have plans available for...
Right, but to stay on that, it sounds like you're eliminating downstairs bedroom, it's moving upstairs, is that...
That's correct.
To be clear, it's going from a small bedroom house to a big bedroom house. Yes, one bedroom, but instead of a tiny one, it's gonna be one...
So we don't have to really worry about it?
Yeah.
And, and the other one, you can call it den or whatever.
Yeah, which is a, is a very small house.
So right now, it's, had, they answered the questions sufficiently for us to make a decision on...
On the setback?
On the setback.
Yeah, um, that's, Kyle was brought up the question about the, uh, that, uh, our hardest question.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I guess, we can go through the criteria on this one and...
Well, is there anything else we would like clarification on or more, for them to expand on before we, cause if we start going through the criteria, then we have to, A, we have to go to public comments so that they can...
Yeah.
Um, but then we deliberate without being able to ask any more questions, so...
Yeah, right, so...
I wanna make sure that everyone has what they feel they need to be able to make a decision on the setback.
Uh...
And is what they've provided for information on, unnecessary hardship enough?
Do we have that much here, that their responses? Do we have their responses?
Yep.
Here, like...
Wait, it's in this packet, right?
It was separate from that, there should be, um, if you have a...
Cause I went through here.
And we've gone through lots of things.
So, so just, Brandon, just one more time, so this is like, this is the hardest question for us, so it'll be the same issue every time we go through each of the, the variances, just, we're always gonna wanna know what's unique about your property, not that it's not, uh, non-conforming at the moment, right, cause we, we're all in agreement that it's non-conforming, we understand that. So it's something about your property that's unique, um, that we're, that we always have to be able to speak to, and I think that's kinda what Kyle was getting to when he was asking the question, right? So, you know, so if there's more that you can say about that specific piece of property in relation to your neighbors, um, that, that would be helpful for us.
Okay.
If that made sense, my question.
Yes, so is your asking me to answer that question again, you know, from the perspective of this variance?
Yes.
Okay, so, so yes, it is, uh, unique in the, uh, way that it's, uh, shaped, as you can, uh, see on this, uh, map, it just narrows out. So, like I said, that's why we're going up, because we're not, cause, uh, going to the sides is not an option, going closer to the water is not in my interest, or, because, I mean, I do care about the environment and I also know that it's just not worth it. And then going the other way is, uh, that's where the, um, my, uh, well is, and then it slopes up even more, and that's where my driveway starts. So nothing is moving that way. So what's unique about my property, it doesn't offer any option other than what we are proposing.
I think the other unique feature is in the front of his property, in front of his driveway, is also there's, there's no neighbors. There's, there's no one.
Yeah.
It's hard, there's no direct in line, there's no direct neighbor in line that he's gonna impact by doing anything to his property. He's kinda all by himself.
Okay.
Do you have any...
Why don't we go on this one?
Well, um, we can open up public comments, um, if you guys have anything to say on behalf of the project, or otherwise, uh, please state your name and your address, and...
Hi, my name is Casey Macklin Legassi, I'm at 15 Circuit Drive. Um, I directly abut Brandon, I think we actually share the most property line there is on that side of Circuit Drive. Um, the properties themselves on Circuit Drive are quite small, we're all about two tenths of an acre. Our property itself did experience several trips to the zoning board and planning board, um, when it came to putting in a new septic many years ago. We were not the property owners at the time. Um, and so it is something that each neighbor is quite familiar with when it comes to either A, trying to stay in their property, or B, trying to either figure out if it is worth staying at their property. Um, Brandon's property is by far the largest in lengthwise, so it is quite odd in comparison to the rest of the neighborhood. Um, I have no concerns as far as losing any type of view, whether it be waterfront or sunrise itself. I am aware that the neighbors that abut my property to the, if you're staring at my house to the right, will not lose any view either. Um, as Brandon said, they do not have any windows on that side of the home. Um, their property is higher in elevation than ours is, Brandon's is just about the same as mine, um, at this current time, but again, with him going up, I have no concerns as far as losing any type of view. So we have no objections to the property change.
Thanks, can you just, just for our purposes here, um, we have Brandon along, are you to the, which side are you, are you in this little one up here? I need to, just remind us.
We are property number 53 on the map, you three.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, yeah, we will close public comments. Um, any further questions at that, for the applicant as far as, we're just starting determining the setback?
No questions.
No.
Okay, so we're gonna take a minute, we're gonna go into deliberation, um, on this variance, make a determination, and we'll start in on the next one. Okay? All right. Um, so we can go through each criteria. Um, so the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, um, I mean, they're not going any closer to the setback than they could really are.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, um, we're just doing, we're just doing the, um, setback on this one.
Right, there's no further encroachment on the setback.
Yeah, there, there's...
No further encroachment.
Yeah. Perfect.
Any other comments to add to that?
No, just give it, are we, give it simple?
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because...
Okay, the, the ordinance, this one has nothing to do with water quality, but, uh, the, uh... So the variance would kind of, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because, uh, there's no, again, no, uh, reduction in setbacks from the existing footprint. Same footprint, yeah.
It's not becoming more non-conforming.
It's, there's the terminology, yeah. It's, it's not being more non-conforming, double negatives, double negative.
All right, so, uh, if variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be, would be observed because there's no reduction in setbacks, it's the same footprint, and it's not becoming more non-conforming.
Right.
Any other comment?
No.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? There is substantial justice in granting the variance because, uh, note any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice.
Uh, I would say that the, um, there is no, uh, gain to the general public, uh, in enforcing this, and so there, or the, uh, loss to the individual would outweigh, uh, would outweigh the, uh, gain, any gain to the general public, since there isn't any.
Right. There is no gain.
Yeah, it's no gain to the general public, so, uh, the loss, the applicant's loss would outweigh that.
Okay. Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because...
Because this is, uh, increases the value of the house, and therefore, um, the value of the neighborhood properties would not be decreased.
In fact, may be increased.
In fact, might be increased, but, uh, they're not losing anything in terms of, uh, view or light, so, uh, they wouldn't lose value from that, and they benefit from the higher value of house in the property.
Okay. Any more?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Literal enforcement of provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and specific application of that provision to the property because...
And again, I would say that there's, uh, the, the nature of the, of the property, uh, in this area, um, restricts the ability to use it, um, in conformity with the ordinance, and there's no general public gain from enforcing that ordinance, since there's no change in the house footprint. Or in this case, the setback. Since that's worth discussing.
All right, so the nature of all the properties in the area restricts the use...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's really doesn't make sense, because we're distinguishing it between other properties, so the, uh, the narrow, like the shape, narrow nature, the shape of the property, the narrow shape of the property...
And the layout of the property? With like the location of the...
And the layout.
Small.
The topography is, uh, prohibits...
Right. Their ability to use their land.
To use the property with it, um, and, and no, yeah, and no, there's no decrease in setbacks that are being discussed.
Yeah, I would just keep it with the long and narrow and that, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so the narrow shape and layout of the property and topography restricts use and no gain to public by denying the variance.
Okay.
And then the proposed use is a reasonable one because...
Uh, because it's permitted, it's, it's a, it's a pre-existing use.
All right, any further additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Okay. Uh, so the variance for the setback, um, uh, we, any emotion?
Oh, yeah, the, we grant the variance be, um, for the setback, um, to, uh...
Side setback.
Order 205.5...
Or side setback.
E, uh, side setback, um, because it met all five criteria.
Second.
Did you say, what is the...
Uh, it's unchanged, so, um...
Is it 10 feet?
Oh, wait a second, do we have to grant the...
Don't you have to give it the setback?
Yes, so, uh...
So it'd be 10 feet when 20 feet is required, right?
Yes.
Um, one thing is, we, we wanna tell them is, if Pedro determines that it's not 10 feet, you, this variance is giving you only, just giving you a 10-foot. So if he comes back to you and says, "There's only nine feet here..."
Oh, God.
You know what I mean?
You did measure it, right?
Yeah, he did, he did, but I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
We'll be here.
Yeah, in other words, if you decide to put another foot, another foot of insulation on your house or something and clad it before you clad it, then, uh, you're out of luck.
So just know it's, it's not unlimited variance, it's for 10.
Oh, oh, it is, 10 foot, yeah, it, it's... Oh, it is, 10 foot, yeah, it's, yeah, the stipulation on all these is gonna be that the...
Okay, 10 means 10.
Footprint doesn't...
All right, so the motion is for granting the variance of 10 feet when 20 feet is required, the side setback for 104.5E because it met all of the criteria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, one down. So now we are going to discuss the aquifer protection ordinance for non-conforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses, which is 201.7. So if you would like to go through your application for that one, two... We're missing part of it here. I don't, I think it's on the...
It's on the back.
Well, I see one, two, three, we're missing four.
Three's on the back and then five.
On the three, you have a...
No, I don't see, I think it's four.
Okay.
Oh, so it probably shifted.
Okay. All right, well, while we're looking at it, do you wanna start going through the second application?
Yeah, you wanted 201.7, right?
Yep.
The proposed variance will not be contrary to public interest because it will not change the character, safety, or inter-public rights. It will not compromise the water. Number two, there is substantial justice in granting the variance because the current structure only allows for limited use of the property. The new structure will improve the look of the neighborhood. And the plan, okay, the basic, sorry, let's stop a little bit. The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because the plan does not add any more footprint because it will be constructed upward only, and the home sits on a slope, so there will be little to no change in what my neigh- neighboring properties would experience. Five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because the current ordinance doesn't allow for full use of the home, which is the smallest on circuit drive. No environmental impacts to the water will result from the proposed structure, and the proposed use is a reasonable one because it will not infringe on the people, on the people, community, or environment. And the, your request is to utilize full and reasonable use of the property without burdening the community. The structure is the smallest and sits low on a slope, so the visual, not, will change no quality of life for the neighbors.
All right, so I guess which one we're missing is, there is substantial just, yes, so there is substantial justice in granting the variance because is the criteria that's missing.
I got, I got number, I got through five.
Yeah, so somehow number three got switched to number four.
Three got switched.
Or number four got switched to number three, so we're missing...
Number four's missing?
So if you wanted to answer that on the fly, there is substantial justice in granting the variance because any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice.
Right, it's not gonna affect anybody because it's not going to expand the footprint, and it's only going to go upward, and like I said, from the slope, the, right, the rise from the general view of the public is gonna be quite insignificant from the distance.
You don't have any questions, Rick? Does anyone have any questions in reference to this ordinance? No? I will both open and close public comment for the record, and we can deliberate on this one. So we, I know we've had an application recently that we talked extensively about what an expanded, what defined an expanded use.
Right, and that's, that's where I was best to try to go, that I like to underline expanded use. And again, we've had a lot of, I've seen a lot of these come, and a lot of lawyers will argue that it's not a changing use, obviously, since it's residential. And the question, if it expands the use, it's not, it's not, it doesn't say expanding the building, it says expanding the use. And I, I think that most of the arguments made are that, for example, changing it from one family to a two-family. I can see you've been here before, too.
I know where you're going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know this.
Yeah, it's, the use is single-family residential. And I question whether actually we need to grant this variance because that use is not really being expanded. I think we can bear that in mind as we go through.
Correction.
We, we can't take any more public comment. We're sorry, we're into deliberation. He's not even supposed to be talking to you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think, I think we can go through here and, and use the fact that...
I mean, it is, it is a one-bedroom, single-family...
The reason for this, this ordinance being, the use not being expanded, if you're making it for more people, for example, that would be an expansion of use for the aquifer protection zone because it would have an impact on the quality of the water. And this is where I think, I think this, this particular variance is where we want to put a condition is that, that the septic system be evaluated and approved for the, for the use intended, granted by Pedro, so that, I know, he's supposed to do that anyway, but that...
But if it's staying a single-bedroom house, and it is a single-bedroom, it's remaining a single bedroom.
Single bedroom, that would, to me, would not be an expansion of use.
Right, and that also isn't really changing the septic.
I, I realize that, I just prefer to have him make the decision of whether, you know, but I, I agree with you, I think that the fact that the use isn't expanded because it's going from one bedroom.
Yeah, it's an existing year-round, single-family residence versus...
At some point, the use changed from, from seasonal cottage...
Right.
To year-round house. And there is part of our ordinance that requires that be done officially, and the septic system is one of the big things they evaluate when that's done. But if, if that's already the, the use that's on the property guard, I don't even think they need the variance because the use isn't expanded, the use, which is single-family, a single-person residential, single...
I think what makes this one different from the other one that we had this discussion on is they were expanding the footprint outward.
Yeah.
I, I think we ought, we ought to go through this, grant the variance on this because Pedro will find potentially follow it, so I think we ought to...
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Let's go right through it.
All right, so the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because...
And it's, because...
The, the use is not changing.
The, the impact on the aquifer is not being changed.
Is that what's in question right now? Yeah, yeah, this is the aquifer ordinance.
This is the aquifer protection ordinance, so...
The use is not being expanded or changed, right? So...
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the impact on the aquifer remains the same, is not, is not, there's no negative impact on the aquifer.
All right, so the, the impact to the aquifer does not change.
Right. So...
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Could hear that. Rick's erasing was like, yeah.
I heard it.
The YouTube watchers are gonna be like, what?
If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because...
Okay. Again, there's no gain to the general public, and there would be a loss to the individual.
Are we, is that number three?
That's two.
Spirit.
Turn two, substantial justice is...
No, number two is the...
Oh.
Is, yeah, don't look at the application.
Oh, okay.
The application is numbered wrong. We're missing a number. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because...
Sure, because...
So basically, the same as number one.
Yeah, and those are usually going the same, so, no, yeah, just...
All right, same as above?
Same, same as above, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, now, there is substantial justice in granting the variance because...
Okay, because there's no, there's no gain to the general public by denying it. Great. Come running, Rick, I'm running, I have to shorten this.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because...
It's not impacting the aquifer.
Yes, perfect. Same answer as one.
Not impacting... Getting lots of practice how to spell aquifer here. I keep wanting to put a C in there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship
The, I haven't seen that's a tough, such an odd question to try to answer on this ordinance.
For this particular ordinance, yes.
There isn't a fair and substantial relationship between the purposes of the ordinance and the application to this property because there is no impact on the aquifer. I think we use the same answer, is that it's sort of like saying variance isn't needed, but we're saying that there's not a correlation between the ordinance...
And use remains the same? I mean, the use really isn't changing?
Yeah, the aquifer remains unaffected, or, sorry, there's no change in...
Yes.
Impact on the aquifer.
No impact to the aquifer, and the use isn't changing.
Right. And it's reasonable use because it's a pre-existing.
It's what?
It's a pre-existing use. It's an existing use, you could say.
Yeah, just, there's no change in the impact.
Yeah, down the top one, and then down below, it's, the proposed use is reasonable because it's an existing...
That the use is not being expanded or changed.
Yeah.
All right, so for the top part, there's no change to the impact. And then for the second, it's an existing, an existing use not being expanded or changed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. I need a motion.
I'll move that the, variance be granted for the, to, to, Article 201.7 because it met the five criteria.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. There's two. Okay, so the third application is the shoreline protection ordinance, requiring 150-foot setback from the shoreline, 205.4C. So one more on. So if you wanna kind of quickly go through and add any, any other details that you might want to add from your application, we can go through this one.
Okay, so yeah, we need to speed it up?
Sure.
All right, the proposed variance would not be contrary to public interest because the project will not compromise the water. It is the cove area of Power Park where the water is stagnant. We will also use a waddle.
Yeah, waddle.
Yeah, waddle. The material that is an extra layer of protection. Yeah, a waddle is those...
A cell fence.
A cell fence.
Even though we're not doing any groundwork.
Just as an extra layer of protection.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I just thought of what that was, too. The variance, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the water would not be compromised. There is substantial justice in granting the variance because there will not be environmental consequences. The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the structural footprint will not change while adding potential property value and more tax dollars to the community. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because my structures weren't the furthest from the water on circuit drive, yet one of the smallest properties, not allowing for full reasonable use of the property, and the very, and, and variance is needed for fair and appropriate use. Current stru- current structural conditions make reasonable use impossible. Side right away. Set forward.
You did take me in, my word. Is there any more information we feel we need about this in order to go through the criteria?
No, I'm just like reading in, and here they're seeming mostly about the septic system. But all it says is building setbacks 150 feet of the shoreline. Okay, so that whole part about failed septic system is not, is not part of what we need to worry about. I'm not sure why it's part of a building setback, but they could have stuck it in there somewhere. So we're just concerned about the building setback.
To the water.
To the water, yeah.
Which, do we know, what is the setback currently? What is, how far away is it from the water?
The structure from the water is 36 feet.
36 feet, okay. So you're asking for a variance of 100 and...
14.
14?
You have 36.5 on, where it's crossed out on, on the...
Oh, yeah.
Shoreline, and that's the, that's the horizontal distance on the shoreline, and you're saying it's also 36, oh, here, structure to water, 36 feet.
Yeah, my 36 feet is from my structure, my structure to where the property drops off into the water.
Yeah, okay. So that's 36, so, yeah.
The, the high-water mark is where I go by.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what we use.
I'm very, I'm very passionate about water safety, and, and, yeah, I do it with the state law, with like, you know, the water setback laws, and very concerned with pesticides and herbicides. And, uh, yeah.
Is that 36.5 or is it 36S?
Is that 36 point...
Oh, no, 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 okay, oh, that, oh, I'm very sorry, that, that cross out, 36.5, that's a, that's what...
Shoreline distance.
Uh, what was it? I'm forgetting her name.
Oh, that's the front edge on the shoreline. Okay, thank you.
The number 36, the 36 distance is what I actually have.
Yeah, yeah, I was confused because they're both 36, but one's in the, in the, in the verbiage there.
Yeah, one's 36, the, the other one's 36.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I feel like after all of the other discussion, we probably have the information that we need to...
Right.
Okay. So we'll start with number one, the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, I want to say this is gonna be very similar to the setback on the side, that it's, it's not approaching any further on the...
Yeah, it's...
Where's number one? There's no further encroachment on the setback, is what we use for the...
Right, that's good.
Megan, just, just for the record, you want to open and close public comment?
Oh, yes, yes, we will open and close public comment, thank you.
Adam, is there anything to say?
Go.
What, what, Adam?
Is that you or he?
Yeah, I know. Don't remind me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
And, and number two, I think, those are often...
Go hand in hand.
Go together, they're often voted on together.
Yeah, I mean, really, I can go with what we did on the first one, no reduction in setbacks, same footprint, not be... Yeah, I mean, really, I can go with what we did on the first one, no reduction in setback, same footprint, not becoming more non-conforming.
There you go.
Yep, I would make it easy.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is substantial justice in granting the variance because our previous was no gain to general public by enforcing this, so lost individual would outweigh gain to the general public.
I think, perfect, just referred to it earlier, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because?
There's no change in.
Well, it's, there's no reason to say this is going to change water quality, I mean, that's what this setback is concerned with, right?
Yeah, that's right, this is shoreline protection, so there would be no change in water quality. Didn't you? No, didn't you? I can't even say it.
I can't, yeah, you can't, you spell it.
Don't spell it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And then little enforcement, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because?
I think we can just use this same answer for the setback on the first.
Make sure I have the right one here? Yeah, this is the setback requirement. But the narrow shape and layout of the property and topography restricts the use and no gain to public by denying variance.
Right, and that the proposed use is reasonable because.
It's a pre-existing use.
Pre-existing use.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? I need a motion.
Move that we grant the variance to the 205.3.
Variance of 114 feet.
Of a variance of 114 feet, yeah. To allow the building to stay where it is.
Sorry, to Article 205.4C?
205 point, 205.3, oh, 205.4C, yes.
Because it met the, all the criteria?
Because it met all five criteria, yeah, yeah.
All right, it got seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
And we'll be at 10 o'clock deadline, so.
Right, we got the last one started before 10 o'clock, all right. We're on a roll. Sure are, it's going way better than earlier, okay. Okay, so the last one is the shoreline protection ordinance as well, 205.9A, non-conforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses. I don't, do we, maybe needs to go through any of this?
No, I think we can read his remarks and, and, let's see. Improved, must do, this one's slightly worded differently, non-conforming uses. Is the use non-conforming? May not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses. Well, it's definitely not being changed to another non-conforming use, but I'm not even sure the use is non-conforming, except by definition, it's, structure's non-conforming. The non-conforming uses in existence prior to the enactment of the ordinance may be continued, maintained, repaired, and improved unless and until such use becomes an imminent hazard to public health and safety, well, we can rule that out. And then the non-conforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses. Period, and so it's, it's, so that's why it needs a variance, is because it says it can't be expanded, so I think we just go through the criteria and.
I think we can compare it to the second one, if you want.
Yeah, this is the, still also the shoreline, shoreline protection district.
Did you have someone say, Rick, you're good?
I think for formality's sake, should we have the applicants go through their application?
We certainly can, yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you guys, if you want to just read through your application for the fourth variance, please.
I'm stretched. All right, the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the project's completion would not impact public or private services, will not harm the environment, will not infringe on the neighbor's privacy or quality of life. Two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it supports orderly development and maintains the neighborhood's unique character, the unique shape, I wrote shape twice, the unique shape of the lot makes following the exact measurements difficult, however the proposed, however the proposal still supports the overall goal of keeping the community desirable. Three, there is substantial justice in granting the variance because it allows reasonable use of the property without harming anybody, harming my neighbors or community, denying the various would create hardship on a person, on, that doesn't matter on a personal level, but if it were granted, it would pose no disadvantage to others. The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the proposed changes are consistent with the character of the neighborhood and will not cause any negative effects such as increased traffic or pollution. And five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because the law's unique condition make strict enforcement unfair as it prevents reasonable use. Granting the variance won't harm the area or go against the ordinance's, the ordinance proposed. And it works, and it aligns with the surrounding area and allows for practical use of the property. Strict enforcement would create unnecessary difficulty due to the property's conditions. Following the ordinance exactly would make reasonable use possible. Variance is needed to ensure fair and appropriate use. Aside me. Sorry, I was stuttering a little.
Okay. So since the purposes of this ordinance are to protect, maintain, and enhance the water quality, preserve, and enhance, and conserve, protect aquatic and terrestrial habitat, that's the framework for which we should be answering these questions, so I would say the proposed variance is not contrary to the public interest because it does not.
Can we open and close public comment?
Yes, public comment, thank you. This is why I have you guys, I need you. All right.
Okay, you closed it?
Yes, open and closed.
So, because there is no effect of this structure on the, on the shoreline protection ordinance's purposes. Of this project, I guess we should say, not structure.
No effect of this project on the shoreline protection ordinance's purposes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, if variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because? No, yeah, no water quality affected?
Yeah, there's no, there's no.
Repeat number one.
Yeah, what he said.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is substantial justice in granting the variance because? No gain to the general public by denying it?
Yes, there's no, no gain to the general public by denying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because?
Because.
It's not impacting.
It's not affecting the water or terrestrial area around Powell Pond.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because?
Because there's no relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the project being presented. And, and, and we'll use the same thing.
We have no change to the impact on the other one.
Okay, so that the, the shape and, this isn't really related to the shape and topography of the lot, but something unique about the lot that would keep it from. I just don't think there's any fair and substantial relationship between the public purposes of the ordinance.
Well, that's why with the other one that we were determining the non-conforming, it was no change to the impact.
Yeah.
Was the first one, and then it's an existing use being, not being expanded or changed.
Right, okay, that's, that's right, yeah.
With this one?
Yeah, and I just, I was trying to work in the unique character of the thing, but it's, it's not related to the.
Does it change to the impact of the water quality?
Yeah, it's something back to the water. Or land quality.
And then, do you want to use the, it's an existing use, not being expanded or changed?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a existing use.
Existing non-conforming use?
It's existed permitted use, so, yeah, well, not performing, but that. I would say the reason that it would be reasonable is just because it's a pre-existing permitted use.
All right, you want to leave out the not being expanded?
Residential, residential use is permitted in that zone.
All right, so this is permitted use, do you want to add the not being expanded or changed part?
Oh, it's not, it'd be, yeah, I just, no, just leave this, the, the second part is just a pre-existing permitted use.
Okay, so for the first part, I have no change to the impact of water quality or land quality, and then for the second, I have pre-existing permitted use. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so, motion to grant the variance.
Grant the variance.
To 205.
5.9A.
A. Because it met the criteria.
Because it met the five criteria, yeah, that's no dimensions.
All right, Rick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right. Well, guys, we got there. All right, so all four of the variances did pass. I will send out your notice of decision within five business days. And I will put out there as well that this decision can be appealed for the next 30 days, so we don't usually recommend starting any construction in the next 30 days. Am I missing anything?
Well, they can go forward.
You can go forward, but it can be appealed.
It's at your peril.
Yes. Yes, in a butter.
An appeal, anybody, any kind of interest, you have to have some kind of interest, is it in a butter? Or the select board can appeal any decision. Who else, Rick, has appealed, it doesn't matter.
It's not happening.
I know, I know.
We have to let you know that it is an appealable decision for 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the variance is good for two years, so if you have not started, if you have not made good effort to start your project in the next two years, you will have to come back. So please, don't do that. We already have to do that for someone else, okay.
Board business.
There was something that Robin just wanted to. Yeah, that's fine. All right, Robin has some handouts?
Or I can send by email, I just didn't have anyone working down.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you have copies, might as well get it written.
Right. Reading this. All right, this is. Right, did Kyle get one? Okay, okay, all right, pass, take one, pass me down. Okay, thank you. Is that the only letter decision I have to write tonight? It's for this one, right? Yes, okay, perfect. I'm trying to figure out where I put my. I want to make sure I keep what I just wrote on so that I can do that, but I'll give you everything else. I think we are good. Peter's the only one that currently knows this, heads up, Peter's gonna be in charge in October and November. We made it to 14 weeks yesterday and all is well.
Okay.
So. That didn't need to be. Meeting adjourned, that should have happened first.